Good evening, welcome to the December 20th, or December 10th, 2013 Select Board Meeting. I'm calling it to order at this point. First of all, has everyone read the meetings? And when you want to...
I'll make your motion to accept the minutes from the November 12th meeting.
Second?
All in favor? Carrie? Public hearing. Benjamin Sant... I'm sorry, I just had some eye surgeries, so I'm having a little trouble reading here. Benjamin Santos Rogers, DBA La Mexicana Restaurant on Roosevelt Trail for new liquor license. Is Benjamin here?
Yeah.
Can you get a microphone, please? So congratulations, Benjamin.
Well, thank you.
I think?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I just kind of wanted to hear you say it.
All right.
I'm sorry, I stepped in, but you go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
It's just, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody here for the public hearing? So tell us about your new acquisition. I know it's not different to us, but it's different to you.
Right.
So tell us how this came about.
My wife and I are taking over the ownership of La Mexicana. We're very good friends with the current owners. Her husband recently became a police officer and therefore cannot obtain a liquor license. They're beginning to start a family and decided now was the time to transition into their new endeavors. So they approached us along with the current manager, Parma, who will be staying on as the manager, and asked us if we would be interested in taking over ownership of the business. And after thinking about it for a little bit, we decided to take it over.
Excellent.
Benjamin, I ask you a negative question. I read your application, and I do note that there is an O E Y fairly recent one on there, and I assume that this is not a regular thing with you.
No, it's not a regular thing. That happened back in 2005. It was an error in judgment, or 2007, I should say. It was an error in judgment, and when it did happen, I had made the conscious decision to pull over. And when the police officer showed up, I was pulled over on the side of the road and not driving. But obviously, I had gotten there and made a bad judgment call, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How long have you owned the restaurant?
We're doing the paperwork right now, so everything's going.
So you don't actually own it yet?
Um, not, no. We have the LLC established, we have the insurance in place, and everything should be ready to go on December 15th, should all the applications go through with the liquor license.
So I guess my question is, how does that work? He's applying for something he doesn't own.
That's good.
It's a good question. It's a timing question, though. The alternative would be that, you know, he has to, well, he couldn't operate, he'd have to shut down, I guess, until the next meeting, or we'd have to have a special meeting. So it's a good question, but...
When is paperwork supposed to be done? A transaction completed?
Our anticipation of taking over is on the 15th. It's a turnkey operation. It's not something that we're purchasing. The equipment...
So they're just handing everything over to you?
Correct. The equipment and everything indoors has been sold to the owner of the building, and the owner of the building is leasing the equipment and the property to us.
Suppose you could make an approval subject to a date certain?
A tentative approval, yeah.
Or a date certain, when we see the paperwork and the transfer of ownership?
Yeah, because I don't think you can approve a liquor license unless someone is the actual owner. I mean, I'm not positive, but I don't think you can.
What would we have to show in order to do that?
That you own the business.
Just as simple as something that's written from the current owners to us?
Well, I mean, if there's going to be a transfer of the assets to you, is that what's...
There are no assets that are transferring to us.
So they transferred the assets to the owner of the building, the owner of the building is going to lease them back to him, so he's only getting the name and the ability to run the business.
And you formed an LLC?
Correct.
File with Secretary of State?
Correct.
So that should be sufficient. As long as he's filed with Secretary of State, the LLC is there, so.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that he's starting to serve today.
Right.
So he can serve liquor whenever he wants to, based on that. And it would have to be at this location, because that's where the license is approved to.
Motion?
We have to close the public hearing.
You have to close the public hearing. You'd probably have to open it if...
You have to open for any comment.
Any comments from the public?
Is that a comment from the public?
Public hearing is closed.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license for Benjamin Santos Rogers, doing business as La Mexicana Restaurant.
Second?
All in favor?
Congratulations. Good luck.
I should add, too, that we have done another life safety inspection, and everything was satisfactory that way, so I want to let you know that.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, consideration of new planning board member, Benjamin?
Crowder.
Crowder, yes. I told you I was having trouble reading.
Two Benjamins in a row, what are the chances?
Apparently pretty good this evening. I don't know if you'd like me to introduce myself, or speak a little bit, or if you have questions for me, or...
Yes, introduce yourself and where your place of residence.
Absolutely. My name's Benjamin Crowder. I've been a resident of Raymond since I was approximately four years old, and I moved here from Wiscasset. In the interest of disclosure, my father did used to be the town manager of Raymond several years ago. Other than going the way to college in New Orleans, I've lived on 63 Sloans Cove Road in Raymond since I was a young child. I've been involved in Raymond, I've watched it grow and change, and I've certainly been interested in its development and keeping it, kind of preserving it the way it is. I did go to Tulane University in New Orleans for undergraduate school. I graduated with a bachelor's degree from there in political science, and then went to University of Maine School of Law in Portland, where I graduated with my first doctorate degree in 2008, and was admitted to practice law in 2009, and have been doing so since.
That's pretty good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
A near-native lawyer. Not bad.
As close as it's going to get, maybe.
Ben, why do you want to serve in the planning board?
Well, I mean, I want to try to start small. I have an interest in participating in Raymond Town Government in general. I think that Raymond has a pretty distinct character, which it's been able to maintain fairly effectively since then, and part of the planning board's job is to help with planning as far as town ordinances and things like that, and preserving land and open spaces, and making sure that the character of the town remains the same. So I guess, having a role in continuing to help the town that I've watched and grown up in stay the same town that it is, and not be, veer off the path in which it's already been traveling.
What kind of law are you practicing?
I do general practice law now. I do a little bit of everything. I do not do real estate law. That's probably what's on your mind. I do mostly criminal law and family law. I do a little bit of trusts and estates and things like that, a little bit of corporate, but only as far as establishing people's businesses, and so that's mostly what I do. My office is in North Wyndham, right next to the Sea Coast Fund Park.
Other questions for you? I was going to ask Benjamin if you had any special skills that you could apply to the planning board, but...
None that come to mind off the top of my head.
Many times over.
He was a great waiter when he worked at Mr. D's.
That's true.
As he was going through law school.
That same building that we just had the liquor license for. I worked at two different restaurants in there, so yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Ben Crowder to the planning board.
Second?
All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have fun.
I'll try.
2014 Sebago Lake Rotary Club Ice Fishing Derby update?
Thanks for having me. I'm Toby Pennels, for those who don't know me. I have pretty strict guidance from Don to keep this brief, which I will. We, of course, have made application to use Raymond Town facilities for the derby, which we've done in the past. We, the derby has, as we all know, struggled the last couple of years, mostly due to Mother Nature. It's fair to say we were on the ropes. It's fair to say there was a lynching party that asked me to do it and take over. Obviously, I've been involved with the derby for a long time. I'm passionate about the derby. My personal opinions are, it is a charitable fundraiser that we do in cooperation, obviously, with our communities, and we do it as a fish management tool for the landlocked salmon, to help that species, which is really kind of paramount to the town of Raymond. So we get it, and I'm an avid salmon fisherman myself, and I can tell you that I think the fishing in Sebago has improved because of this derby. So the issue at hand, obviously, when we run a successful derby is to have good ice. We've been there, we know that. There's a million reasons to not do this derby, but there's a lot of good reasons to do the derby, particularly financially and for something that I think has been good for not only the Raymond community, but the entire Lake Region community. So we have scheduled the derby, subject, obviously, using Town of Raymond facilities for February 15th, 16th. It's no coincidence that that parallels the free fishing weekend, and it is a week earlier than we have done it. We did it that weekend last year, although Sebago was canceled for toge or lake trout. But last year was the first year where we actually moved it up to that weekend, and we're going to, again, subject to you guys, we're going to continue that. Polar Dip is also another item that was on the ropes. Shaw, as you may have or may not have heard, was the proponentcy of making that baby happen, and they're not going to do it this year. But Maine Children's Cancer, as an organization, has stepped up to the plate, and they definitely want to continue to do it, and they're going to drive the train on getting the jumpers, and we're going to make sure that they have a place that they can do that safely and have the parking and organize that. That'll be Saturday. Sunday, we'll, again, subject to the ice conditions, we'll do the speedrun, which I have managed that in the past. I will probably pass that baton to somebody, but I'll oversee the conduct of that. We went through a complete rework on the engineering plan for that with a new engineering company out of Bangor that was then later approved by the state. So this year, we'll use that same plan. It's in the same general area that we have always done it in the past. And with that, a couple of things. I do have some of the folks who are working with me. I've got Deb McFail here, a longtime Rotarian. I've got Tammy Farthing here. Both of these are Raymond residents, so they have a vested interest in seeing this. And Nicole, also a Raymond resident, so this is part of my entourage, and they...
Coincidentally, all from Raymond.
Yeah, I'm not from Raymond.
Not part of your lynching party.
I'm sorry?
Not part of your lynching party.
No, no, the lynching party was a different organization. Actually, they're part of these. Part of these were dual-purpose, you know?
I see Ingo Hartig there.
Ingo snuck in. I'm sorry, Ingo. I didn't know he was coming. I'm glad he's here. He's been a longtime friend and, obviously, an advocate for this as well. So a couple of questions or things that I have, and I'm sure you have stuff for me, too. One is that I know in the past, the town has enabled us to sort of control the boat ramp for the purposes of controlling vendors. Tom Noonan was sort of refreshing my memory on that this afternoon, and I would just look to Don for guidance on that, and if we could have that, that would be wonderful. I don't anticipate a huge number of vendors out on the ice, but Nicole's taken that on, and the object of the game, the object of the game is to raise money for charity, so...
We would suggest that we have another pre-event planning session, and Chief Tupper's here this evening, he may want to speak on this issue, but in the past, he has organized all the public safety folks. You know, we've done this many times now, so I think that we can look to, you know, prior derbies for the organization of that meeting and the structure of the event. It's order of magnitude, we're talking about the same amount of people, roughly, that you've been hoping for the last few years?
Well, I mean, if you go back to the airshow, we're not going to have those kinds of numbers.
I know, those were different years, different...
Not talking about 1,500 people, maybe? Yeah. The Polar Dip brings in a ton, as you know, of people, and this year, with the water as low as it is, and I don't see us seeing that level increase that much, where I don't anticipate any huge problems with parking on the Polar Dip, because we've got a few hundred feet of sand to work with there. I already talked to Chief Tupper about a tentative date. Can I throw that out?
Sure.
January 14th, right? Which is a Tuesday at 4:30 PM to have that exact meeting, which I was anticipating.
Now, Raymond Beach, I mean, is a given. What about Tassel Top?
I'd love to have Tassel Top for parking, and like we have in the past, I know the history. You know, I've lived and breathed this, you know, and I'm aware of the history, but to the, you know, to the degree that we can use it and ask for that permission, and whatever, you know, what you need from us, I'm willing to try and, you know, I'll take that. If it's something unusual, I guess I'd probably have to take it back to committee, but I don't think that's going to be the case, so we would love to have it, Don.
I can contact the chairman of the board of directors and see what I can do in that regard, but they actually have been requesting for a number of years, as you know, to have a meeting with the organizers sometime in the early fall, so we're a little past that. But I can see what I can do with Bob Metz, and I can get back to you?
Absolutely. I mean, is a meeting in December out of the question?
They would like to do it in their wrap-up meeting, and they close out their season, and they have a spring meeting and then a fall meeting.
How about a teleconference?
There might be a possibility. So, I mean, I'm willing to try to facilitate whatever we can do on that, but that's a separate facility from the town, an independent board of directors, and...
I understand.
In the past, they've been cooperative, and I've, will certainly do what I can to see if I can make that happen.
Yep, I understand. And you've told me about that in the past. I didn't take this on until well after that timeframe whatsoever.
I know. So I'll talk to Bob, and so just parking, because the town will plow it. Both facilities, the town prefers to do the plowing.
Awesome, thank you.
So to minimize, we sometimes cause damage ourselves, but somebody unfamiliar with the parking areas could perhaps cause more.
Yep, understand. And Tassel Top, in the past, has had gate-opening and closing times. We get that.
Right, we're going to have to, I think we're going to have to work all that through with the board of directors. Maybe Bruce can help us with that, too.
Okay, and then the other piece that usually comes up is the insurance piece?
Right.
I mean, I read your paperwork. We have the ability to get that insurance. Tammy actually is in the insurance business, and she'll take that on. And you just tell me who you want as named insureds on that paperwork, and we'll make sure that you have it. That's all I got.
Thanks very much.
So far, the weather is helping this year.
I think so.
The lake temperature should be going down, based on the last few weeks. It's a lot colder now in November than it was last year, so...
What I didn't mention is, not related to the weather so much, except that it is, which is that I did meet with Inland Fisheries and their biology department yesterday morning to go over, you know, what we can and can't do. Again, it's a fish management tool that we're using here, and one of the things that I did want was a backup to Sebago, a full-fledged backup, and I think I have that. I don't really want to disclose which body of water that is yet until I have a conversation with the club, but at least we'll have something if we have to do what we've done the last two years.
Ice ball, yes or no? Alcohol, yes or no?
Can I say maybe?
Well, that's another issue we have to work through.
And here's why I say that only is, Nappy has approached me in the past about bringing money to the table, but of course, you know what business they're in, and I don't think it's going to happen, but on the other hand, I don't want to close that door and leave here with something that I might not scramble. I just don't have it yet. If we're doing it as a club, it's not happening, but if I have a sponsor that shows up, I've been approached in the past by Baxter Brewing, I've been approached by Nappy, I don't want to close those doors, and sponsors are so few and precious to us that I would just hope I could work it with you.
I don't want to speak for the selectmen on this, because each year's a new year, but in the past, what's happened is, we want to see somebody like a Nappy, or somebody who would have a catering liquor license, and we would want you to be outside the territorial limits of Raymond proper, and that's on the ice, in other words.
I'm not sure that you're out of your limits.
I understand that, too.
But we'll work out with the state of Maine.
That's sort of, because we've had this discussion, this debate with the state of Maine, whose jurisdiction is it exactly? I'm being a little facetious, but we wouldn't want it to be on the, what we would consider the town's landfall.
Yep, I understand.
We would want it to be on the ice, and therefore, we would say that would be jurisdictional state of Maine. You'd have a licensed vendor with a catering license, and that's how we kind of look at that. If the selectmen don't disagree?
No, no. Accurate.
I still think that the state's going to need signatures from some municipality on a license, but...
Yeah, well, no, no.
And I don't think that's going to, to be honest with you, I'm thinking it's a 30% to 40% chance to give you. I just don't want to close the door, and I completely understand what you want, and I think, I don't see why that can't happen.
And I'm willing to work with you on that, but that's sort of, just to refresh folks' memory, because it's been a while, that's the resolution that we worked out, and I think if that's still okay with the selectmen, you know, I can facilitate that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved?
Second?
All in favor? Thank you.
Knock on the wood for your cold weather.
Mostly have my phone number if there's an issue, call me.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thanks.
Toby, thanks for taking that on.
Chief Tupper?
See ya.
Chief? Ready to give us a six-month review of our mutual aid agreement with the Town of Gray?
Well, I can't quite give you a full six months. The dispatch center didn't actually get the CAD system programmed until September, even though we had the plan in effect for six months now. We've actually dated a work for about three months. However, we're about nacking, nacking even. The responses have been excellent, very professional. Right now, we're about there, two transports up to us, given coverage areas. If you want to look at it in another direction, if we have a fire response in either area, we're each about seven to 10 minutes apart from each other, and it's equal. They're coming down to Krantz Point, et cetera, and there are what, seven to 10 minutes behind us, as we are behind them, getting through both Raymond roads. It's working out very well. We've got nothing but positive feedback, and actually, because of this, we've gotten a new application coming in from the Krantz Point area of Gray for fire department, because we can, that one worked out.
A new what?
New application, new applicant.
Applicant, a person?
Yes, a person.
Thank you.
Any questions or concerns?
You've been a busy guy over the last couple of weeks, and everything's so professional with you. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. The next reconsideration of Tenny River Corridor project vote from the last meeting, the previous meeting?
Aren't we on the Raymond Community Forest update?
Yeah.
Where?
Of one.
Ah, yes, yeah, we're...
You can't say.
Your pardon, we're on the Raymond Committee, Community Forest Update Report of other Conservation Commission items. Kerry Wallace, Lune Echo, and John Rand of Raymond Conserv, Conservation Commission.
Good to see everybody. John Rand, Raymond Conservation Commission.
John, are you going to read that whole file word for word?
This whole file. It started when you were two. We don't have the benefit of Kerry Wallia tonight, executive director of Lune Echo, so you will now get a very, you know, much less professional, nothing close to Chief Tupper's professional presentation, but we'll give you what we got. We've had some activity on the Community Forest Project. We have a pretty, pretty big plate, I'd say, cut out for us for the coming winter. We've had three conservation meetings this fall, September, October, November, and there's been some activity at Lune Echo that Kerry has initiated. I guess first up is that they've gotten two donations already for the project to help support it from Raymond, I believe Raymond residents, and it's a great show of support at this early stage. The main activities for the coming months are going to be two significant grant applications that Lune Echo's working on, and a private fundraising campaign that'll probably be mobilized in late, mid-late winter, I would say, at the rate things are going. The current plan for the property is under development. My goal, from the RCC standpoint, is to have a single property management plan that would touch on forest management. I'd hope to get some input from Greg on that. Included in that would be a set of proposed trails on both the Lower Canesca piece and up on Pismir. With the forest management part of it, we'd hope that we could at least outline the potential harvest activities and a timeline for them, so that we can kind of tighten up our earlier estimates of revenue that this property could produce over a long, long horizon from timber, timber harvest. Certainly, there wouldn't likely be much, except for trails, timber from trails, perhaps, trail clearing, in the near term. I think the main item for the board to be aware of, and I'm not here tonight to ask to put it on the agenda, but we'll expect to probably have that as a formal request at your January meeting. But the timeline on the arrangement with Hancock Land Company is to have a decision on a commitment by December 2014, a year from now. And if that decision is favorable, to act on the agreement that Lune Echo signed with Hancock to purchase the property by 2015, two years from now, December 2015, so that's two years out from now. What will be coming to you in January 4 will be a request for funds to put on the warrant for June to see if the town will support the town's portion of funding to secure the conservation property and project. And right now, I don't really have a fix on what those dollar amounts would be. I think when we were here last, we talked about a $50,000 contribution from the town, and certainly, a significant portion of that can come from the Raymond Open Space account, which I believe is sitting at about $50,000, plus or minus. We have some commitments for that account in the next agenda item tonight, but I'm thinking that we'd have 30,000 to 35,000 from the Open Space Fund that we'd be able to put towards a $50,000 request for funding for the Raymond Community Forest Project. So details when we get further, along with our visioning and planning on fundraising, and Kerry has a better fix on the grants, but essentially, that's the update on the Community Forest. We hope to, we're keeping it alive on every conservation meeting agenda, and hope to have at least two committees, one that would work on property management plan and one that would work on fundraising, and I hope to see some activity there this winter. Any questions?
So when do you plan on bringing it? We're going to try and wrap up all the warrants usually by the end of March, early April?
Yep.
You're going to be ready to go by then as far as the warrant?
Yes, we will. February, I'm going to say February at the latest and I would actually prefer to get on the, on the January agenda for at least, you know, the first presentation of that because I imagine there, you know, we might have some discussion back and forth on that. So I'll, we'll do our very best not to push it out past that.
Mike? John, as part of your, the low-risk option agreement, which I like the wording on, at this point Hancock won't lumber anymore? Is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding, yeah.
So because you've entered into this option, they're not going to log?
That's my understanding. Why? Have you seen trucks down there?
No, I'm just, I mean, it speaks to, it speaks to potential revenue going forward.
Right, right.
And if you're going to take, you know, this much land off the tax rolls, if they're going to take another 10 or 15 years' worth of logging income off, then it kind of throws the numbers off. So, so for January, if you'd at least, could you ask that question?
Confirm that.
Well, that land was cut.
Five years ago?
Yeah, maybe three, five years ago.
That's what it said in the, in the thing.
Yeah, and there's nothing to cut right now.
There isn't, okay. When I drove, the uphill portion still seemed pretty thick. I don't know if it's a lot harder to harvest, but, but, but the lot, you know, you'd hate to be buying it in December of '15 and they buzz in on September of '15 and say, oh, by the way, we're, we're taking value at this point, so.
Yeah, my, we'll certainly confirm that. My understanding is that, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an issue. Lune Echo, Kerry and Carol Meter, who is, is helping out at Lune Echo Land Trust, they did a site walk on the Canesca portion of the property two, three weeks ago and from what I understood, I didn't see any recent cutting.
And I'm almost certain that the agreement allows no more.
No more cutting.
Ninety-nine percent.
So we will, we'll confirm that. I think I'll just, my own feeling is I'm still interested in seeing some folks step up from the town locally and perhaps in a, in a wider circle. I think there's some mountain bike folks that would be, be interested in this project. But I'll just take the opportunity tonight to say we, we welcome and, and will need community support on this thing. I don't want to push it through as a, you know, Conservation Commission project only that, that we don't have a good set of stewards that are, are local and within Raymond that are, that are going to be, you know, available to, to help care for the property. I think that come, our survey of last June that Danielle helped us out with was pretty, pretty darn positive in terms of support for the project. So we're still banking on that as a true, as a measure of, of community interest.
Any other questions for John?
I have another question for you folks. We did, Greg, Greg secured a project canopy grant a couple of years ago to map the boundaries of the town. Does that ring a bell? Year and a half back?
That was on Egypt Road and Patricia Avenue Extension.
Okay, that, those properties were, okay.
It wasn't for the entire town.
It wasn't for the town, okay. But that's, that's just one of the grants that's still available. We can go at that. Again, it wouldn't be a big chunk of change, but it would, it would be a piece of help. And the two other big ones would be a U.S. Forest Service Grant and certainly the Land for Men Futures Cycle, which Lune Echo has had a pretty good track record on, although, you know, that competition for those funds is certainly pretty stiff these days.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, John.
Thank you much.
Next reconsideration of Tenny River Corridor project vote from the November meeting. Joe, I'll ask you to take it from here because I have to recuse myself.
Ms. Chair, I like to, having voted on the prevailing side, make a motion to reconsider our action on the Tenny River funding.
Second.
And Ms. Chair, if I can continue, there was a question of whether or not there was a conflict of interest because you're owning property on the Tenny River. Conflicts of interest are very difficult to define and it's always up to the person in the position to claim whether or not they feel there's a conflict of interest. The defining moment of conflicts of interest is whether or not you benefit financially, usually through a pecuniary interest, which means that you actually assemble cash from whatever your action is. Technically, you don't and that's why I don't think this vote needs to happen. But I think after you thought about some of your actions and, and there was a concern raised by a citizen, you decided that we need to take another vote.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, which is what we're going to do and you'll be recusing yourself. But I can assure you that there really isn't a conflict of interest here. It's only the appearance, which is, you know, hard to define and people look at it differently. But technically, you do not have a, a conflict of interest because you have no pecuniary interest in this. You're not going to get any cash. The dilemma is, does your property value go up if there's no building on the river next to your property? And that's all speculation at this point, so.
It's very subjective and with that in mind, I am going to ask that you go forward with this, myself not in the vote. Because we did have that question and the question came from the citizen and so they're going to be able to respect that.
Well, we also had a discussion right after the meeting, to be clear, and I concur with Joe's assessment and the issue was discussed briefly and so there was an opportunity for folks to, to have a debate, to raise the issue. That didn't occur. I don't think there's any real issue here, but I think you can never go wrong by taking the absolute highest road. So why not take the absolute highest road and revote it? That was what we discussed and I, you know, applaud the chair for putting it back on the agenda.
Thank you, Joe. Would you move a cover?
Yep.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve the Tenny River, what would it be, funding from the town as requested by, by Lune Echo Trust.
Mr. Sackman? Mr. Levitt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bruno. I think when we talk about the perception of conflict of interest, I think what we're really trying to get at is where are we at a certain given amount of time where some benefit can accrue to a public official in order to maintain public trust in both the process and the individual? So a more liberal interpretation of conflict of interest would also include that construction, if you would, that the perception in itself can be extremely damaging in this community. As discussed, this concept of perception of conflict of interest at length on many different issues. I applaud, I guess, I, I am confused because at two separate meetings, Mr. Bruno, you, I take it acting as parliamentarian, has suggested to Mr. Gifford that he recuse himself. So I don't know if that's from a technical standpoint, that you, both on April 10th, 2012, and at the November 12th meeting, both times you recommended that Mr. Gifford recuse himself. I think if you want to go back as to the perception of conflict of interest, it's very, very similar to the FOPA that Fry Island made when it came out and said, we want a 50-car parking lot with Phase One and we're going to want another 150 cars parking in Phase Two and Three. So if we go back to the April 12th, 2010 meeting, or excuse me, April 10th, 2012 meeting, and that's why it's great to have DVDs and written minutes, which that will come up later in other discussions. It was specifically put forward that Phase Three was Mr. Gifford's property, that Lune Echo Trust, the Boy Scouts, and with, I guess, some of the consultation of the Raymond Conservation Commission, that Phase One was Denny Cole's property, Phase Two was Stephanie Bouvier, and I don't know why we don't use names because we're just a small community, and Phase Three was Mr. Gifford's property. As a matter of fact, I raised that question during the body of the discussion because again, perception sometimes leads into a potential that we forget to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So I do applaud tonight's action that we're finally getting to the truth. It's only taken us seven or eight months to get there, to get to the recusal. I disagree with Mr. Bruno and Mr. Willard's comments that these are just technical matters. I think this gets to the matter of trust that, that the public has at this point. Also, I would also like to state that at the November 12th meeting, Ann Gass, who gave the presentation, made a comment. Just to clarify, she said that these funds, the $15,000, don't come out of the taxpayer's pocket. And I was somewhat amazed, knowing the level of experience of tax policy that sits at this particular select board, that that comment wasn't challenged because we all know that the tree growth taxes deferred, deferred taxes to the citizens of the Town of Raymond. Therefore, there is no free ride. Public officials, members of the public who believe that money that is spent by a town, by a state, by a federal government is somebody else's money are just plain wrong. So therefore, just to correct that, again, misperception that the public may end up losing trust in those various boards that are here to deliberate and do their due diligence. I thought that statement was quite misleading to say that the Open Space Fund is not coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. I'll let someone else on the board explain how that happens when you have a lower assessment on your taxes and you pay less because you're going to have no, a low development and then when you decide to pull it out of tree growth and you pay the penalty. That's just deferred taxes. We all paid more. At the time that that land went out of tree growth, went into tree growth, every citizen in the Town of Raymond paid more in their tax bill that year because that money was not, that, those pieces of land were not being taxed at their value. So again, I'll leave that for others to explain more in detail to the public. But I think the broad scope is trust, you have to earn it. Thank you.
Can I see something?
Mr. John?
Dana Desjardins, 64 River Road. I spoke with Hall Thompson today, the, he's in charge of our road association. There's only a few people on our road that are aware of what's going on. We've been kept in the dark. We haven't been told of what's going on by either this, this group that's trying to get this money from the town. And, you know, to me, it's, it's, it's giving money away that's to a group of people that discriminate. The Boy Scouts of America discriminate against homosexuals. And my tax dollars, as far as I'm concerned, shouldn't go to a group of people that discriminate against anybody. I do not judge people by the color of their skin, their race, or their sexual preference. And I'm really disappointed with Lune Echo and you guys for backing up a group of, of individuals that discriminate against certain people because of their sexual orientation. And I'll be brief. Camp Hines is a good neighbor, but they have their issues. They leave, they come in and go, but, you know, sometimes they leave campfires that are unattended. They don't pay attention to what's going on, on, on weekends. Their gates are open. I live on that road, so I see it. And Chief Tupper's here right now and he knows what ashes do when they're left unattended. He attended a fire about a month and, month or so ago, right, Miss Chief?
Just about.
Yep. And, and it was caused by what, Chief Tupper?
Ashes from wood, so.
Okay, so it, it could have destroyed a brand-new camp. The reason that fire was discovered is because of me. I walked my dogs that morning. I smelled smoke. It wasn't wood smoke, it was leaves that were burning. It totally enclosed the camp and it was too much for me to take care of. So I called 911 and Chief Tupper and his crew came over and took, took care of it, which I was grateful for and the owners of that camp were very grateful for. But we're not seeing anything on, on my road from any commitment from the Boy Scouts. I don't, I don't care if they shoot, Sam. They could shoot all day long. But when they leave fires unattended, it, it matters to me. And until that's resolved and until something happens with the group that's trying to do this project and with the rest of the neighbors on that road, I can't see funding $15,000 ever for this project. Thank you.
You make a good point about the fires. Thank you. Any other public discussion? Seeing none? All is in favor? Opposed? Three, nothing, one recusal. Back up to you. Kurt LeBell here?
No, he's not.
He's not. A consideration of abatements submitted by contrast.
Nope. That's surgery.
I cannot see.
Consideration of conducting a citizen's survey.
Ah, consideration of conducting a citizen's survey. And this is Selectmen Reynolds, Selectmen Reynolds.
You sure you don't want to do this, Sam?
I can't even see you from here. Who's driving you home? Oh, no, I could hear you. Clearing the roads.
This, this item was, was brought up at our select board retreat last month. We, we as a select board met, tried to figure out priorities going forward. And one of the things that came out of the meeting is we have our priorities, but what are the town's priorities? And we were trying to figure out how to get that information. So we talked about possibly having a survey. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight, is the possibility of the town having a professionally-done survey, developed by people who do this for a living, administered by people who do this so that it's as unbiased as it can be. You know, we would obviously put forth topics we wanted to know about. But it's not an unusual thing in this, this day and age. Saco has done it recently. Other communities have done it recently. So we have examples of surveys that have been done by towns. You know, it's pretty easy for us to sit up here and know we've got to do something with the roads, right? I mean, that's, that's probably fairly straightforward. You know, John comes tonight and he's hoping that, you know, the town will say, yes, we should, we should spend some town money and, and buy some forest land. You know, town meeting will, will vet that out. But in terms of other long-term planning goals, we don't know what the town feels like. So that's why this is on the agenda tonight and as a, as a first blush. The town has also talked to a couple of survey companies and, and in our packets tonight and online, there are examples of these surveys. online, there are examples of these surveys. And so, that's why we're here. So, I opened it up for discussion for the board. We've had, you know, months to think about this possibility, and so I would look for continued discussion on this.
Can I add what we were talking about as far as possible options?
You have to look at me when you say that.
Oh, can I add, sorry. Can I add what we were talking about?
Yeah, go right ahead.
You have to look at me.
Oh.
You can't see her, though. She is looking at you.
It's like, what? At this retreat, it was good because we threw out a bunch of ideas because we really want to know where the people want to go with the town. And some of the services, we're looking at both sides of them, like adding services or taking services away. Like, one of the things is, would you like to cut one of the services, is curbside trash? No, it was just put out there as an option. But we're talking like, okay, what do people feel about like a town run rec center, a town hall, library, community center, law enforcement, how do people feel about that in this town? Julie's back, she's shaking her head, yeah. Bulky waste, about getting that back again, you know, over in Costco. The library, I don't know why, I think bringing the library into the town budget instead of their own. Bringing Raymond Founder's Day back.
Bring the library in as a hybrid. Sure.
Right. That's kind of like putting everything together. Raymond Founder's Day, making that like a yearly thing again, and getting the town something that each year that people look forward to. The school, the RSU, how do people feel about being merged with that? How do they feel about not separating from it? What are services, what people like to see that Raymond doesn't have? And communication, like the internet or the Roadrunner back? These are things that we would put on. So, it's a big variety that we will put out there to get responses back.
We might also see what the satisfaction level is or lack thereof with the current services. And on the trash issue, I mean, we heard the message loud and clear that, you know, despite the idea of trying to contain the, you know, tax rate, that that is something that is not 100% appreciated in all quarters. And so, you know, we got that message. So, it would be, we are trying to be responsible to do what we can to, as I say, contain the tax rate and the growth in government. And so, what we heard, though, and what I hear a lot, is people say, well, I'm willing to pay for this or that service. And so, by using this mechanism, you might have a scientific tool that would give you some statistically relevant data that the Selectmen could use and the other town committees could use to plan the town's future. And it wouldn't be something that had just been done in the vacuum of, geez, we're going to cut taxes or raise taxes.
Is the sentiment that this would be done this year out of Selectman contingency, or...
There really is no sentiment. I mean, you had a discussion, it's on the agenda, it's open to whatever funding mechanism you desire. I suppose the options are, if you do it midstream, would be contingency, that's the easiest one. Another way would be to hold a special town meeting and, you know, raise the money that way. Of course, the most conservative way would be to wait till the annual town meeting and ask the town meeting whether they want to raise the money for a survey. So, there are various mechanisms you could, you know, employ.
One of the things that I was considering as we approached the meeting this evening was, it's December. Anything we do isn't going to affect this year's budget potentially. Also, it's December, we don't have a mechanism to capture any of the summer folks. I haven't asked that question of, you know, the professionals, how would they capture potential summer folks who come up and do that? But they're a big part of our tax base. And asking, you know, trying to figure out a way to get some response there is hard. And I also don't want to rush this, if we do go forward with it, in terms of trying to get something done for this town meeting, for instance, to have results for this town meeting. Because I think we need a little bit of time to develop the questions and make sure that if we're going to spend the money, that we have enough of the right questions thrown out there. So, I was thinking that the timeframe, if we went ahead with this, would be either a July-August timeframe, but then the survey company may tell us everybody's on vacation during that timeframe. So, I think there's more investigation if we were to go forward. But how do you capture some of the summer people?
I mean, you also have to consider that the summer people are a large part of the tax base, but they're not the residents of Raymond.
True.
And so, you have to distinguish those two people, who's a resident and who's not a resident. Because the non-residents are going to want, you know, probably less service for less money because they feel like they're paying them off as it is, where the people who live here year-round probably have a different priority. So, if you're going to do a survey like that, you make sure you get separate answers.
Sure. And I get that's part of the consideration, but I didn't see any way that this could affect this year's budget cycle, right? Because you couldn't do it in time. Don?
So, that would speak to an annual town meeting question, you know, having some more discussions about this through the winter, and then having it on the annual town meeting agenda, designing the survey and shooting for a summer implementation. Is that what you're thinking?
I'd like to see, I mean, like, I agree with Mike. You can't just jump into it and just do it just because, and that's why we added so many things to it. But on the other, if, you know, if we want to move forward with this, then I think that we need to set some steps.
If you're going to use it for planning, you want those results probably by spring so you can plan over the summer and the fall.
Of what you want to...
Because the survey's going to take probably two weeks to conduct, to get a good response. By the time you get the results tabulated, it's a month. So, and you don't want it in the fall so you can plan for your budget come next January. So... But you do need to include the summer residents. Taxpayer.
Maybe.
Maybe. I'm not convinced of that, all right? My personal feeling is, if you're not a year-round resident, you do have some say because of your tax load, but the people who live here year-round feel the winter's here and know what happens, and so... If the survey is designed so that they're separated and you can tell who is who, then I think... Right, yeah. I mean, you probably want some interest to hear what the summer residents think, you know, and how it meshes with the total plan for Raymond. But I'm not totally convinced that I would hold up a survey until the summer residents come back.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think you could wait till town meeting, get the money approved at town meeting, then start the process and then have the results in time. I do think you'll have to start before that. But, you know, input at town meeting or, you know, preliminary results at town meeting potentially. But I agree, I don't think you wait till July to start the process.
I mean... Do we get many of the summer residents, like now, for example, which we know where they live? Where they... It all depends how you conduct the survey, whether it's a phone survey or a mail survey.
Well, it's probably going to be some sort of a hybrid, for sure.
Can we have a meeting, like a workshop with, like, these survey things and work out some of these questions?
Well, I mean, I think the first thing you do is put out an RFP. Yeah, that's right. Talk to somebody who knows what to do. I mean, send out an RFP to, you know, four or five survey companies in Maine, and bring them in, interview them, and select one, or at least have a discussion with a primary one, and then go from there. I don't, you know. I mean, through the process...
So, you're talking more like an RFQ to, unless you have a budget and you have an approval, right?
Well, I mean, you know, you do have a contingency fund that if the price is reasonable, you can go ahead with the survey. Or you can go to town meeting and say, hey, we're going to run the survey. But I mean, any board would want to know where people stand. It's no different than a business and their employees. Employee surveys are done all the time.
What I'm asking is, if you had an approval and a budget, and then you would put out an RFP and ask for actual proposals, you know, and it's known what you have for a budget, then that's one thing. We're trying still to learn more about the process and look at consultants and pick a consultant we work, we want to work with, and then work into the more detailed, what's it going to cost? That, to me, is more of an RFQ, send us your qualifications, we'll figure out who we might want to work with, and then seek an approval for the money. I'm asking the question, I don't know how you're doing this.
Yeah.
I don't think it's that big a job that you need an RFQ. I understand what you're saying.
So, the first question they're going to ask me, or one of the questions they're going to ask me, is the budget for the RFP, probably.
Well, I mean...
You know, I think we could, I think in an RF, I think we've gotten some examples of number of questions. We could say a survey to be no larger than X. We would like both telephone and mail. And then, you know, I would be happy to help you work up some, a list, and it would have some definite stop points, so they could give us, you know, an RFP which would include a budget number.
How many survey monkeys are there in Maine?
You mean professional firms?
Yeah.
Good ones?
Probably four to five.
Yeah. So, we could, yeah, that's almost the easy part. I would love to use a Maine-based if possible.
Absolutely, yeah.
Keep it local. But a part of this discussion is interest. I mean, does the board...
You know what? I've been here, what, eight years now, and we just go by what we think Raymond citizens want, you know, by talking to people around town and hearing what they say. So, it would be nice to kind of have a little guidance as to what the majority, I mean, I don't know everyone in Raymond, I don't talk to everyone in Raymond, you know, but I would like to have some knowledge of what people are thinking.
The audience, anybody out there want to speak to this?
Charles Levin, 14 Levitt Road in East Raymond. This is great. I thought I was going to have to bring this up during public comment, so I'm glad to take the opportunity a little earlier. This discussion mostly took place on November 18th at a publicly-agended meeting of the Select Board. We have no minutes because you didn't approve any minutes tonight, so I'm assuming that's just an oversight. There is no DVD recording, it's been requested. That was a pretty far-ranging discussion. Selectmen SEDAC did a great job of summarizing, just missed a few things that you may want to look at to include on the survey. One is the comment, since I was the only citizen here, I guess I'm in a very unique position to make these comments, and since there are no minutes, I guess you're just going to have to believe me. It's all about trust. One of the comments made was, the RSU is spend-happy, so I'm wondering, would we put that question on a survey? Another member of the board said, the whole RSU situation stinks. So, again, I don't know professionally how you might word that question when we go out to the public and ask them, does the RSU stink? And of course, the best one is, we need a divorce from the RSU. So, again, as we go forward and look at this survey, and we do it so professionally, it may behoove us to step back and look at ourselves as a professional board and ask the question, A, why aren't there any minutes to this meeting of November 18th? B, why are we continuing to have DVD and technical difficulties in our communications? I would think we're living in the 1950s. I'm waiting for McCarthy to come back and start running the tape machine for us. I don't know. We're just having a problem technically...
Charlie, can you stick to the point, please?
Excuse me, is the chair, I can't talk to you, is the chair?
I'm running this, Charlie.
Well, no, I can address you.
Charlie, I'm asking you to stick to the point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Let's stick with the protocol. So, before we go forward, we want to look backwards, but we have a hard time looking backwards. And again, establishing that line of communication and trust and competency so that the whole community, and I mean the whole community, when we say out of hand that we're going to dismiss Raymond taxpayers who are living on the shorefront, who may or may not be full-time residents of this town, yet will put together an economic development task force to talk about signage on Route 302 and setbacks, and to say, and to have a whole task force set up. We have 130 businesses in the Town of Raymond. Does anyone want to tell me how many summer residents we have living on the shore properties and paying a fairly hefty tax in the Town of Raymond? So, to kind of dismiss that group of people out of hand is probably one of the reasons why we're moving forward with paving Raymond cake. Might as well just go ahead and do it if those folks don't have any consideration in any of our deliberations. And again, if we don't afford them the opportunity through DVDs and modern communications for them to stay in tune with what these discussions taking place, and not just these tonight at a Selectmen's meeting, but all the discussions, workshops, meetings that take place between contract planners and lawyers, until we have some true transparency, it's very difficult for this citizen to support some of the activities of this board, particularly this one about a survey. I think we should survey ourselves first and then decide how we move forward with a little more integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I can't let those comments go. First of all, the November 18th meeting was a retreat amongst the Select Board where we wanted to have open discussion, which we did.
We had very good discussion.
Yeah, and to sit there and quote from that meeting totally out of context and take soundbites is irrational for one. And, you know, it just tries once again to cast dispersions upon this board. My comment of, I don't believe non-residents have the same say as residents of the Town of Raymond. I am not dismissing them. They choose not to live here. They choose to be non-residents. Yes, they pay 58% of the taxes in this town. I get that. But you know what? I'm not dismissing them. I'm just saying, from my perception, from my perspective, I think it should be residents of the Town of Raymond that participate in the survey. That's all. It's not a dismissal. It's twisting of words to make me look bad, to make us look bad. It's the same old stuff that's been going on, writing emails to the newspaper, you know, I'm getting tired of it, and Mr. Levitt continues to do it.
Joe?
Joe, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay.
I may stop you from saying it, though.
Oh, no, no. I think the good thing is, that's why we sit up here and we talk things out. We don't make definite deals, and we're human, and we make errors, and God forbid if we do make an error, but anyways, that's why we sit up here and talk. The whole point of having that retreat, and thank you to this board, because they stopped and they explained things to me. I knew the school board side of it, I didn't know the Select Board, and they had patience, and they talked it through. I never claimed to know everything. And I mentioned at a previous meeting that I wanted a divorce from the school board. And I got to give credit here, I really do. Mr. Levitt and Julie, you guys sent an email to the newspaper, and I had the most fantastic conversation yesterday with a reporter, and I really had a chance to put my thoughts out there, to let the public people know, if this middle school is built, it is going to dig deep into people's pockets. And if it gets voted in, Raymond only has a third of the vote, and they can be outvoted by Wyndham. So, that's why I had a nice conversation. So, thank you very much for the emails you sent in, really, because it opened up the conversation for me. And as far as up here, this is why we sit and we talk about things, and we debate them back and forth. And we're talking about surveys, what is the best way to go? We didn't say anything definite, we're not putting anybody down, and I think there's just a lot of anger from a certain individual that just needs to stop reading into things. That's my two cents.
Can I say one positive thing? We, on the issue of the DVD record, I mean, we've been doing DVDs here for many years, and I was as disappointed as anyone when we had a failure, but one failure, we had one failure, audio only, not video. And so, what happens, you know, it wasn't live broadcast out, you know, it's a learning experience. No one's perfect. Well, very few people are perfect. But we're trying to be perfect, and maybe we'll get there. So, the DVDs are online, we're live streaming here tonight for folks who want to watch on the Internet. So, when it comes to transparency and making things available for the public, I would put our record and our broadcasts and what we make available up against any small town in Maine, and I think we would be very superior, we would look very superior in that way. So, but for that one misfire on the audio, you know, it didn't work.
Dominic, thank you for the work that you do do. Thank you.
Sam, I have two words if I can.
Two words.
Then we'll let you guys keep going. Charlie. Only thought on the survey is that I think it's a great idea, and I'm wondering if we're 10 years out on this document now, and...
and I wouldn't, um, be, uh, asking anyone to get excited about doing another one of these.
Really?
So what I'm hearing is that maybe a survey, a good, detailed, comprehensive, uh, professional, you know, consultant-based survey would be a way, too, I don't know what the State Planning Office says about that, but a way to kind of amend this, or at least consider this, and give us something that's got some, some similar weight and substance, and, um, in, and would allow us to skip going through a three- or four-year comprehensive plan process.
I would have that practical.
Sam, I can answer, I can answer John a little on the comprehensive plan. A few years back, the state finally decided they weren't gonna continue to require the ten-year updates, okay? There's a round of towns that are going through their
Cycle.
twenty-year update, maybe? Like they never got their ten? But that we're not gonna be required to update that maybe for twenty, um, if at all. And they're looking at more regional potential, um, updates on, on it. Now that everybody's done them, how do you do a mini-regional?
Yeah.
And I know, for instance, Greater Portland Council of Governments is currently doing a Lakes Region test for the state on just that process. So to, to, we're, we're not gonna be...
We're not gonna have to do that again.
We're not gonna be strong-armed in the next couple of years to do that by the state, so...
That's a whole other
It's a whole other thing.
...discussion, because there are
Yeah.
some things in the comprehensive plan
There were, there were surveys done for this effort, and that would be a good starting point for questions to, to ask.
But I, I would think, John, that, that a good survey would have a couple of questions from every committee as well.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you, you would look to, what are your top priorities? What do you wanna know? And, and we put it as part of that. I mean, it, we, we gotta figure out how do we determine the question? So I think you bring up a good point from, you know, what do we take out of that? What do we take from, from, uh, Planning Department, Assessing Department?
All departments.
Hours of operation. I mean, it, it, we probably can't have too many questions.
That's my only point. The other thing I found in my stack here was this wonderful new, nine, two thousand thirteen annual report for the town of Raymond. And, uh, just wanna thank the committee for doing such a great job on that document and, uh, the wonderful picture on the front. That's all from me tonight. Thanks.
Great, thanks, John. All right, moving along. Consideration of abatement. Did, did we finish the survey discussion?
No, we didn't.
He just did.
You know...
I, I would, I would like to see, like I said, something that, that we can start the process, even if it's in the next semester, if we have to start now. Yes, we have to start now, have it ready to go then for...
Well, I think we start with the RFP that we're talking about.
Okay, so we're all in agreement?
I'll help John work on RFP and, and, uh, and we'll, we'll start moving forward.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. And we'll report back to the board when we, when we have more information.
Great. We don't need to roll down any. Consideration of, of abatements.
This can be fun.
Be fun, because...
You can't do all of them, they're very fun, yeah?
No.
All right. It's a good thing he doesn't have to read these, 'cause they're so...
Kurt LeBelle is not here this evening. The details were affixed to the, uh, E-packet. Danielle is here. She may have some knowledge of these. If there are any questions, I'll do the best I can. But, uh, they all have explanations and, uh, information provided by Kurt. And so, uh, that's what we have. Some of them.
All right.
Yeah. I'll give you for each one. I'll give the Y.
Yeah, do you wanna see the...
Yeah, it brings, gives, makes the numbers bigger.
We also have a supplement as well, correct?
Yeah, we have a couple.
Right, so although it doesn't indicate here, we have a, a supplement as well.
It does, yeah, we've got it in our packet, so...
I know that, but the, uh, the agenda title is, uh, just abatements, it looks like.
Yeah, all right.
Oh, good.
That's part of what's over there.
Okay, now I'm getting it.
Joe, you have the numbers, and you can read them. I thought you were, I thought that's what you were doing. I was waiting.
Oh, yeah, I was, I'm having issues with my computer right now. So we got, we have, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Eight abatements.
For one, a denrum makes nine.
One denial.
And one denial, okay?
Correct.
All right, um... We'll start with map zero zero nine zero two eight for Tamanus Inc., um, an abatement of thirteen hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Call in favor? Next is lot zero, map zero three three, lot zero zero one for Daniel and Karen Foster, in the amount of twenty-seven dollars.
Second.
Call in favor? Map zero one zero, lot zero one five for Donnie and Nancy Gerens, in the amount of seven hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Call in favor? Map zero one seven, lot oh five four for Carol Oaks, in the amount of forty-six dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Call in favor? All right. PP is what? Personal property abatement for Nancy Fontaine and William Fontaine, in the amount of a hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Call in favor? What was that for, the personal property? Personal property was a camp and trailer which was sold. Personal property aba- abatement for Lisa McDonald, in the amount of ninety-one dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Favor? Personal property for Graybar Financial Services LLC, in the amount of a hundred forty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Favor? Personal property for Energy Propane LLC, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Call in favor?
Joe, would you mind giving the total, just to
Sure.
put it in perspective?
The total is four thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
Thank you.
The abatement that was denied is map oh one five, lot zero eight eight for Joanne Self. And it was, she was, she said that her property, she was asking for an abatement, 'cause she believes the property was undervalued. Okay. Raised to go up. She said it was undervalued, and it was denied.
Right.
Probably refinancing the house or...
No, actu- actually, this is, this is an interesting, I mean, in, in Kurt's summary, it's probably worth bringing up. The, um, the applicant felt that their lot was undervalued, and they wanted the town to show a higher value, because they're trying to sell it, and they've got it listed for more.
Yeah, interesting.
And, um, and so, the, the other thing that Kurt mentioned in his recommendation for denial is that even though they, they filed the application with us, they didn't actually sign it, so they didn't finalize it, so, um... So one, Kurt said that, you know, the town would not be in a, normally be in a position to raise somebody's taxes after commitment. And, uh, that after talking to the landowner believes that she also wanted us just to know about it as well. Uh, so, so that, I think that was part of the recommendation. I did wanna put that out, because it's very unusual for us to get a request to pay more taxes.
Okay, and we have one more?
Well, we have, you wanna finish this one?
Um, we, yeah, you want one more, then? Oh, on the denial?
A second, yeah. Do we have to, yeah?
I don't think you have to.
Uh, I think he wants a tax abatement denial. Yeah, I think he wants it.
He does. Very well done.
Yeah.
Uh, map zero zero nine, lot oh two eight A, Jeffrey Collins, in the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
This one, it should be notice, noted, is the exact same amount as one of the abatements that we did earlier. And basically, what it did is it swapped, um, tax value from one property to another, because it was, um, missed. So that the Tanu, Tanu, I can't say that.
Tamanus.
Tamanus property was still valued with this proc, with this, um, this value. So we actually abated it from, from them, and we're adding it to this one, which is why this is a supplement. It's not actually increasing the overall taxes, but it is, um, just transferring from one account to another. Second.
You need a second or a second?
I was just seconding, 'cause I didn't hear the other second, so...
Call in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
Hold a comment?
Charles Levitt, fourteen Levitt Road. I did have some other issues I wanted to bring up under public comment, but just going back to one that I had referred to earlier, folks must lead pretty sheltered lives if this is angry. You haven't seen angry, and, uh, maybe if this continues, the soundbites and, uh, the recriminations against, uh, citizens coming up and speaking their opinions, uh, continues, maybe you will see angry. One thing I would, uh, like to mention, uh, that came up from the meeting, and all really I was requesting is that we have minutes to these meetings, that they be shown. And you're welcome, Mr. Sadek. Uh, what I sent in the email to the, uh, to one particular newspaper editor was, uh, good luck getting the DVD, because there'll probably be technical difficulties. And that was before it was noticed that there was technical difficulty. So just a matter of some of us speculate better than others, that's all.
Again, thank you to Dominic for all the work he's done.
You're welcome, and thank you, Dominic. Everything's positive. If you wanna applaud, you may, I guess, if the chair allows. Mr. Bruno made a comment at that November eighteenth meeting, uh, that the town needs to improve public relations and be more media savvy. So I guess it's okay for the town and Mr. Bruno to contact and, uh, have discussions with the...
Mr. Chair, public comment is not meant to attack any members of the...
This is not an attack. Uh, I'm just bringing up, uh, facts. Uh, okay, so we'll stay, here's, that's what Mr. Bruno had said, to be more media savvy.
If you look at what public comment is intended to do,
So to bring up in...
That's the point of what Mr. Levitt is doing. Point of order, Charlie.
Uh, I'm bringing up concerns and issues for future, uh, consideration of this board, for future agendas. Therefore, Mr. Bruno, as you know from Bernstein and Shaw's opinion, that you as a selectman have ample opportunity to speak when it's your turn. When I'm at this podium, I'm a member of the public, I air, I turn.
If I was to say they've got an issue, they could...
So here's my issue. If you will please, uh, stop interrupting me, I'll give you my issue. At the last meeting, uh, Chief Tupper, uh, got up and spoke eloquently about some of the, uh, upgrades at the Fire Department projects the Fire Department's been involved in. And, uh, he brought to the attention that we had been given a trailer by the Portland Pipeline Corporation. And he also mentioned that there'd be a press release on Friday. And in, in an effort to improve our communications and public relations and be more media savvy, I think we probably should have, in order to have full disclosure in that press release and the newspaper article, we probably should have highlighted the accomplishments of both Environment Maine and the Clean Waters Coalition. Because if both of those organizations hadn't come forward to this body and brought up the issues of the reverse flow on the pipeline, we might not have ever had a discussion that was brought to our attention by Chief Tupper. I sat on the board at this time, and the chief said, uh, that, uh, when I asked, after Portland Pipeline Corporation had done their beautiful PowerPoint presentation and said how safety-conscious they were, and I asked them when they, was the last time they did safety training in the town of Raymond, and the chief said they hadn't. They hadn't done it for quite a while. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Wilson said, no, we hadn't done it. And so finally, finally, after many years of neglect, whether it was by our own benign neglect, or maybe it was the, uh, uh, change in administrations in the Fire Rescue Department, or maybe it was just a little bit too much media savvy and, uh, public relations by the Portland Pipeline Corporation, that they hadn't done the, the training that they said they were giving to all communities. So I think we missed an opportunity to thank other people in this community, particularly the Clean Waters Coalition and Environment Maine for bringing to the attention the failings of the town of Raymond and the Portland Pipeline. And I do applaud that now we seem to be more on track with having an emergency response in case of some kind of spill. So, yes, now I'm done. Thank you very much. I've had ample opportunity to speak as a member of the public, and I encourage all members of the public to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
Any other public comment?
Already?
Time flies, time flies. It really does.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board and, uh, town staff, I am Walter Lunt, uh, one thirty-four Thomas Pond Terrace. My brief comments tonight are a follow-up to an agenda item from last, uh, June. You'll recall that, uh, the Thomas Pond neighborhood had, uh, had asked you to reconsider your decision of a suspension to trash and, uh, recycling pickup on our road. At that time, you as a board listened, uh, to our concerns, and we feel, uh, responded proactively by providing us with a copy of the established standards for private roads and giving us several months to comply, specifically until next mud season. That we, that we felt, that, Mr. Reynolds' words, yes.
Mud season, I bet it was my word, yes.
Uh, that we felt was a fair and, uh, considered response, and we felt, um, uh, that silence can be deafening, and there's been no talk since then. Uh, we wanted to get back to you, uh, so that you would know, uh, we just didn't come to complain that night and then walk away half-satisfied. We have been busy, and we, uh, we felt it important to come back and report that to you. Many efforts to meet those standards, first and foremost, uh, a much greater resident participation and interest in the condition of our road. We have, um, a new and fully invested, uh, resident road commissioner who has taken his job very, very seriously, and someone that we're very proud of. What a smooth ride all summer. I hope that some of you have had the opportunity, perhaps Nathan has, to, uh, to come down our road and witness the smooth ride. We are graded and scraped now regularly, but we understand that that's, uh, that's, that's only summertime. Now we have a committee of seven residents, uh, who have formed to, uh, review the standards that you gave us, to set policy and determine some long-term goals. They in turn report to our, uh, Road Association Board of Directors. Secondly, and this was the, this was the easy job, I guess, uh, overhead tree branches have been limbed to their required height. And lastly, we now have a, a year-to-year bidding process for contractors that come in and work on our road. Uh, in the past, we've said, oh, I, I guess that needs to be fixed. Do what you can. Uh, now it's been very formalized. We have specific criteria attached to each one of those bids. And it's a, it's a new experience for us, and it's, uh, it's working very well. We also discovered that we have a road contractor who's an actual resident, uh, uh, on, on our road, a summer resident, who's now acting, uh, as our, as our consultant. So there's a lot going on. Finally, our, our Road Association Board of Directors is fully committed to long-range planning. Multi-year plans that, uh, that call for regular maintenance, like better drainage, frequent inspection and replacement plans for our culverts. You know, in retrospect, I think that your sudden suspension of services served as a wake-up call for, for our residents. In the past, gotta say, our approach has been ca... In the past, gotta say, our approach has been casual, crisis maintenance, if you will. That was nobody's fault, excepted by all of us, year to year, just get it done, and we'll move on with our lives. All accepted by consensus, but also several residents wanted me to mention, to comment, that they appreciate being able to recycle again. That practice had virtually stopped after your suspension. And lastly, I'll add that the whole process seems good, seems right. We've got a private road association now working with the town, almost as a partner. And so we're looking forward to going forward and having a smoother ride. So, yeah, we...
No but?
Where...
There's none. There's none. There may be this spring when you visit us again. I don't know.
That is good news.
That is fantastic. There really is.
Thank you.
I would like to just ask, where does it stand?
I was just gonna say that.
I'd love to hear.
So I checked with Nathan. When I heard you were coming, I didn't know what you would be saying, and so I called Nate to see.
We're happy.
Yes, I, that's what he thought you might say, he was hoping you would. But, so I did reach him, he's been out plowing since 2:00 a.m., so I thought, "Well, what can you tell me about the road? How are things going?" And so he has hopefully communicated, or Dave McNally and/or Dave McNally, that, you know, we're not gonna take any draconian actions, we're, you know, I mean, we have to take a look and see what the road is like in mud season. But we've been providing services, hopefully they've been good services.
Yes.
We're trying to work with you and to accomplish the end of improving the road to the degree that it can be, and hopefully get it, you know, into compliance. And, but I think I can speak on behalf of the selectmen. I mean, we, at the outset, we talked a little bit about the survey and wanting to get feedback. I mean, that was pushed back for us. We had been reducing service on roads, trying to find ways to control the tax rate and look at cost centers and that sort of thing. And so we got the message loud and clear, too, and so we've tried to reach out and work with you, and that's what we'll continue to do. And we don't have any plans to suspend service. I can't say absolute. I mean, it depends on what happens with the mud and so forth, but right now, full speed ahead, and we haven't had any problems, according to Nate or Dave McNally.
Okay. I don't know Dave McNally.
Dave McNally is the provider from Pine Tree Waste.
Oh, okay.
So he's the guy who actually supervises the pickup, and they had had problems with the trucks and so forth in there, and I guess they have realized some level of improvement. And they, so I don't, I don't have any problems to report, no issues to report, and no plans to suspend service.
I like the no plans to suspend service.
Right now. Right now.
We'll just keep our thumbs up here.
And I mean, we gotta try to keep the road as good as we can, keep it graded, keep the, you know, keep up the good work, I guess.
Hey, we put the line down through there. We didn't have any problems in the morning.
With the what?
We have a morning, we have two morning problems.
Oh, yeah.
We've been down through that road several times. We don't have problems.
I know Dave McNally too, very well.
We know Dave McNally.
Leaves the word for Pine Tree Waste.
Yeah? Yeah, I mean, it's, sometimes the spring, I see...
We didn't have any problems.
I get there every day, so...
That's great that you guys have the resources that you pulled from the people that work down there to do it, to be able to get it to come together.
And, yes, and referring back to the road consultant that we now have, he has mentioned to us that, yeah, there's nothing magic about some of the changes we've made. One change we made was that apparently we're setting as criteria, main DOT grade gravel. I don't even know what that is, or how it compares to regular gravel. But we're looking forward to a better road next spring. And he warns us, "But don't expect miracles." If it's on the negative side, I would look forward to working with the town, as opposed to, you know, unilaterally saying, "Well, it's canceled again." I, that feels good to us. So if a problem comes up, we really would like to come to Dawn, through Dawn, to Nathan to work out something, perhaps acting as advisors for us. I don't know. I can tell you this, the truck, if success is measured on the depth of potholes, the truck no longer wakes me up in the morning coming through. We've long laughed at ourselves and lived with jokes about our potholes. I recall a couple of years ago, one of my neighbors commenting that, "You have to be careful when you're near my house. There's a big one down there. I saw a Prius go into it, hasn't come out yet." We had a resident post a sign at a particularly large pothole, right after a rainstorm, that filled with water, that said, "Little Thomas Pond, no fishing." But we've gotta stop taking that issue so lightly, I guess. And again, we wanna work with the town on that.
Well, we wanna work with you, so we'll be in touch.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Town Manager Report.
Okay, I've got a few things. The first one, I think, is we'll be closing on Friday, December 13th, from 11:30 to 1:30 for a Board of Selectmen-sponsored Employee Christmas Holiday Recognition Luncheon. Thank you, Teresa Sadek, for the idea and organizing it, and the Selectmen for sponsoring that. Sponsorings that with their own resources, I should indicate, and so that's much, much appreciated by the employees. Not expected at all, but very appreciated, so thank you. We'll be closing at 1:00 on Christmas Eve, the 24th, closing at 4:00 p.m. on New Year's Eve, the 31st, and so I'd like to say to everyone, "Happy holidays, enjoy the season." And we also need to set a couple of meetings, a couple of meetings coming up. I understand that the December 16th workshop at 6:00 p.m. poses a conflict for one selectman. And then the, if moving it to the 17th, I've learned from Danielle, causes a conflict possibly for another selectman, so I don't know...
Me. The 17th is not good for me.
Okay, well, I thought it was gonna be Lonny Taylor, so...
I think Lonny said 16th was better than the 17th, yeah.
Okay, so, we have, we are attending the Fire Rescue Christmas Luncheon, I think, at the station on Wednesday. Is that correct, Bruce?
Correct.
That's correct, okay. A dinner, I should say. And so that leaves, I had plans for Thursday, but I probably could change those plans, and evening plans, if Thursday could work.
Thursday might have to take a look, but it's not...
How's that sound? That caused a conflict for you, though, Danielle, didn't it, Thursday?
Yeah, I have a committee in another town.
Okay, well, we just, we'd have to get a different secretary, that's all, correct?
Well, I think the board, I'm checking right now.
Okay.
So the 17th works for everybody else?
I don't think it works for Lonny. I think that was a problem for Lonny. So we're looking at now the 19th, which Danielle has committee service in a different community, and as I said, I had a plan, but I can change my plan, evening plans. So if that worked, we could go forward tentatively with that date?
The 17th, not the 19th?
The 19th.
19th.
19th, I'll have to take a look at.
You wanna try that, and if it doesn't work, we'll be back in touch?
You still, you have to give 17th notice. Have you posted the one on the 16th?
Yeah, I posted it Friday.
Okay. I mean, the 19th works for me, hasn't worked for everybody else. Was it Thursday, the 19th?
Thursday, the 19th.
I'll have to take a look, it sounds familiar to me.
Okay, well, we'll tentatively say that the Selectmen Workshop, Goal Setting Workshop for the Budget will be on the 19th.
What time?
Well, you're saying 6:00.
You said 6:00.
Whenever you deviate from 7, that's problematic, but 6:00, and so we get that word out, right? Okay. The final thing that I have is that we want to have the next regular meeting on January 14th, 2014.
It's Dan's birthday.
Does that work for everyone?
Yep. 7:00?
7:00 on that one, yeah. And that's what I have.
Okay.
Okay? Louise?
I made a town report through.
Oh, oh, thank you.
They picked up, yeah.
Town reports are in, picked up anytime. Also, an online version?
Yes.
Posted now?
Yes, now.
Okay, great.
And it'll be available as well.
Thank you. And great job on that, by the way, too, everybody involved. Another team effort.
Okay, thank you. Cisco Morris.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the payroll expenses summaries of $45,188.66.
Greg. Call in favor?
And a motion to accept the treasurer's warrant of $63,972.25.
Second. Call in favor? Motion to a chair?
Second. Motion, yeah.
Second motion, whatever.
Thank you.